Are we ready to roll? All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. I'll rise with the pledge of allegiance. Oh, sure. All right, we'll go a little out of order here because it looks like we're ready to roll. So we'll jump to number three, BMS music.
Yes. Matt, you can... Uh, it... Okay, uh, is it on? Cool. Okay. I don't... Okay, is it on now? Cool. My name is Lily Christensen and I'm speaking on behalf of the students who are participating in this year's holidays performance for you. We're excited to share our music with the community and we wanted to express why these opportunities are so meaningful to us. Being part of a musical ensemble gives us a chance to connect with one another in a unique and positive way. Tonight is a chance to celebrate the season, build confidence, and show what we've learned through hours of practice and teamwork. For a lot of students, music isn't just an elective. It's a place where we feel supported, creative, and proud of what we can accomplish together. This year's performance features our wind ensemble rather than our full traditional concert band, and we wanted to highlight how that experience is different. In a small ensemble, every student plays a more independent role. There's no large section to blend into, and each person's part is heard. We list... we learn to listen more closely, adjust to one another, and communicate through our playing. It teaches responsibility, collaboration, and musical awareness in a way that feels both challenging and rewarding. Many of us enjoy this format because it helps us grow not only as musicians, but also as leaders within our groups. This year, we have had a record-tying nine-band students audition for New Hampshire Honors Band and have numerous performances coming up, including a trip to White Rock and our annual winter concert. We're grateful for the support the schools provide to our music programs. Opportunities like this holiday performance help us build confidence, develop new skills, and contribute to a positive school culture. Thank you for the invitation, and we hope you enjoy our holiday music.
Oh, I took twelve years. I was in the band all those years. Played hornet in middle school, then they thought I was going to play bass. I have no idea what any of these things are.
There you go.
But good for you. All right. Okay, it is on, it is on. All right, well, we'll go back to our regular schedule here. Announcements, I think that's where we left off.
We don't have any announcements.
No announcements, all right. Moving on to the minutes, November 12 minutes. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Now, where is Wendy?
I'll second it.
Wendy is doing this remotely.
Oh.
It was a little bit of a white-out when she was out, so...
Wendy, great job on the minutes. I didn't see anything wrong with them.
I saw one thing, one.
Sorry, Wendy. I thought they were great.
Where was it?
Top of the page.
Okay, top of the page?
Which page?
It's page two. Dr. L. and Lorin.
Where on page two?
Yeah, on page two, when it says it's seven B. It says Dr. L. and Lorin, and Dr. L. is Lorin.
Yes, yep.
Do you want to say? You found it.
Fix that.
Is there something else, Angela?
Yeah.
On one other thing.
On the top of page four, yes. There's an extra electric in Roman numeral twelve.
I asked electric.
Yep, ask electric.
Melanie Kunk asked electric.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so you'll amend your motion.
Yes.
Do you still second it?
I still second it.
Oh. Whoever seconded it.
Whoever did it.
All right.
Wendy, you choose.
Any other comments, otherwise? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice habit, moving on. BMS music. Public comment, anyone in public comment? All right. Yeah. Something tells me they just came for the music. Moving on to the SAU Administrator Reports. Marcy, anything to add?
Uh, just to the policy... Ooh, sorry about that. Just to the policy portion. So, we're going to be doing the Fs at our December fifteenth budget meeting. I also added IKF, which is the one on graduation requirements. That's what Matt presented on... When Matt presented on it, I don't remember when that was, but it's just on the changes to the Ed. 306s. And then I just put in front of Melanie and Bryce the policy JICN. It is on prohibition of deepfakes images and other media. And so I'm sure you've seen in the news recently that that is a thing. It is covered in our EHAG, which we just passed, but this is just more specific and talks a little bit about consequences.
And when we talk about deepfakes, we don't specify the nature of the deepfakes. I mean, it's just any image generated without somebody...
So there's, in this particular policy, there... It's leveled according to is it your first offense and what's the severity? And/or what is the severity of the deepfake? It does give some examples, but isn't limited to that.
It's not, it's not limited, sorry. It's not limited to just, like, pictures. It's also like video or anything. Okay, great.
A brave new world.
Yep.
Any questions for Marcy? All right, moving on to Dwayne.
Uh, just... Just one small thing for me. I mentioned the SAFE grant, but I neglected to kind of give a little more detail, just, you know, just assuming that you knew what it was. It's the governor's grant that is in the state budget for SAFE applications, types of things, cameras, you know, accessibility, PA systems, things like that in schools. We've been, you know, we've gotten money all three of the previous rounds. So, we've submitted the Memorial School and the High School PA. Tomorrow, I'm going to submit a grant for the Elementary School and the project. We picked there's some external cameras or external speakers that will tie into the PA system so it's easier to hear when you're outside. So those are applicable under this round. So, fingers crossed that'll work out, and we'll have another round of money through the program.
Any estimate when we would hear back from that grant?
Yeah, so the deadline to submit is Monday, end of day, Monday, the eighth. There is no, that I know, like, concrete word, this is when you're going to hear. But usually the push is always to have that, have those decisions come through prior to the March meetings so that if there's something that you've proposed in the budget and it gets funded in the grant, you can take it out. That's kind of universal. That's kind of been their process the last rounds. So hopefully that's what happens again because we do have, two of the proposals are things that we have in separate warrant articles. And if those were funded, we wouldn't have to have those warrant articles. So that would be great.
What's our deadline, then? What, I'm trying to remember when we finalize our warrant.
Yeah, so our warrant gets finalized in February after the budget hearing. So it would be nice if it was before that and you would just say, hey, we don't have to do this, you just remove it. There is the ability for the board at the meeting to say, hey, we got grant funding on this. Don't vote on this, amend it to zero, encourage people to vote it down, whatever it takes to not have that be kind of double appropriated. However, if it comes after the March meeting, you would have raised that money. Now, it's capital reserve funded money, so that's good, that it's not taxes. So we would just not ask for the money and would just stay in there. But it would be nice to just not go through that, that process, if we didn't have to.
Any questions with Dwayne?
Yes. So, Dwayne, the last meeting was in December, and there was a thing on that we're going to have to pay for the fourth round of testing for the water. We now, I believe, don't have to. So that's covered under the grant. I just wanted to know where we stand on that. And I think I remember we did replace all of the faucets of any, any, um... Any sites that tested higher than the five parts per billion.
So we've done the fourth at the High School and the Memorial School. Those are done. We have results for that, but we haven't looked at them. And my plan is that when we do the Elementary School, which is going to be Saturday, they're going to do, we re-inventoried, they're going to do everything on Saturday, this Saturday. When we get those results, I'll have a good report and kind of tell you where we're at. There are two, I think at least two locations at the Memorial School we didn't replace because the plumbing is pretty comprehensive in there. But those are in some science rooms, so I'll put that in the report. Everything else, I believe, we've replaced.
But we only had to replace the faucet, though.
Right, yep. Well, that's all we, that's all we did replace. I mean, you can kind of get involved so much where, I mean, you'd be, you know, tearing walls down and things like that.
They recommended just doing the faucet.
Yep, yep.
So for those two, why couldn't we replace the faucet?
The plumbing in those areas are from like nineteen sixty. So our fear was, once we got into that, it would, we wouldn't be just a fixture. So, but we're going to see where those results come back, and it might be, we just do it anyway. We'll have to see on those ones, yeah. Then there's another thing that we're talking to the state about, specific to the Memorial School. Because again, that building's our oldest building, and there could be some additional treatment that we could do paid for out of the same grant funds. That's up in the air, but don't, that hasn't been approved yet, but...
Like treatments like osmosis?
Nope, it'd be treat, be treatment for the piping, would actually coat it.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't know much about that. So, that's through Ian's office, and he's working on the, potentially working on the grant for that. So that would be exciting as well.
Wow, that would be...
So I think every step, I think that we've made, we've just made progress, which has been good.
Yeah.
And I'm interested in seeing where the Elementary comes back because that was basically like we created a new building. There's like new locations, obviously, in the addition. We took some locations completely out of service, added places. So we had to re-inventory that whole building. So that's been approved, and we're doing, like I said, the actual testing on Saturday. Or the drawing on Saturday.
When we did the testing, did we ever do the testing where they take first drop? And then they let it run a little bit and then take another testing? So that way you can see how far it is on the line?
No, I mean, we did it the way that we were advised to do the testing from the state.
No, and that might be like after the faucets, if they're still higher than, maybe that's what we do. All right.
And the state's been a really good partner to this, and we'll just, you know, we'll keep doing what they kind of recommend, so...
Awesome. Thanks, Dwayne.
Any other questions with Dwayne? If not, we will move along to Director of Student Services.
Sorry. Not much to add, other than to say we're tracking a lot of legislation. So there's different things that'll be happening that could happen to any school or all school. It doesn't necessarily target special education, but that would have an impact on special education. So we're monitoring all of those things. Unless anyone has questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Awesome. All right, moving on to Owen's report. Any questions for Owen?
I was just... Sorry, I was just curious if one of, with the data dashboard, if one of the things that they were going to look at was the teacher-to-student ratio at the time of like when it's done?
Yeah, that's fairly easy for us to come up with. Actually, it's one of the things we were talking about this morning at our administrative meeting, is that dashboard and what kinds of things we want to capture, not just assessment results. So participation in co-curriculars, how many kids are participating in music and in an athletic team. So there's lots of different things, but we can certainly add that.
Will there, will there be anything about, like, mental health or, you know, issues with needing support or... I'm just kind of...
Probably not. That isn't something that we've discussed. We're trying to highlight areas of strength, and I'm not sure how we would, how we would do that. But we can, if you want to shoot me an email, we can consider it as an administrative group.
Yeah, I was just thinking about a lot of the things that they deal with at the, and Lori can talk more about it, I'm sure, at the elementary level, and socialization, and just sort of what happened to that, and the big lunch bunch, and... Also, it's a subjective thing, so I didn't know if that was...
Yeah, no, we're not looking to publish that, I guess. We're trying to mirror, in some ways, the platform at the DOE that they have. But theirs is really focused on assessment results, so we'll include that, but we want to include other things as well. So as an example, the percentage of kids who go to four-year post-secondary colleges or who go in the military or who go into the workforce, that would be something that we all think we should have on there.
Yeah, that's great.
Do you have an estimate of when you think the dashboard's going to be?
That's a great question. It's definitely a work in progress. We're, I say we, Owen's done a lion's share of that work. I think our goal would be for the first of the year. Well, he's not here, so... We, we looked at... Well, we, we viewed what he had put together today, and it was following a presentation. We have this part of our agenda called the AI Dia Exchange. Get it? Yeah. And so Dwayne hasn't come up yet on that, but... So we share something with AI every time. And this morning, Christine Eflander showed, shared something that she put together with Notebook LM. And while we were there, Beth pulled data from... We had something called the Kid Grid before we got Branching Minds, where we input, manually input all that information. And within that meeting, kind of spit something out that was really, really good-looking, like aesthetically pleasing, and had highlighted a bunch of different areas. This was academic and also attendance. But yeah, works. I think we can do it pretty quickly.
That's great, and this will be on our website?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Can we see like a demo of this stuff working?
Oh, my God. I'm going to be in trouble after this. Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, that's a good idea to bring it here first and have you all see it. The point is not just to have these PDF or some sort of chart that represents a moment in time, but that we can have adapt over the course of the year as kids grow.
I'm thinking like all minority reporting, like floating wind downs.
Yeah, like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Attendance is down. Check it every day. One percent.
All right, any questions for Owen's report? If not, we're going to move right along to the Student Schoolwork Member Report.
Um, there was just one thing. On the prices for the Student Council car raffle, we forgot to put those in. Yeah, but one ticket goes for ten dollars. So, and then, or, excuse me, no, it goes for ten tickets go for fifty dollars, and then there's other, like offerings and deals that they're doing to get the community by that.
Can you explain for people, so there's a car raffle?
Oh, yeah, so it's a driver's, a driver's ed class. I'm pretty sure it's being offered, that's at a nine-hundred-dollar value. But then to raise money for, I'm not exactly sure, I think it's just for like the club, then they're offering that raffle. So I think it's a creative way, and something new that they're trying.
Any questions for our student members? I continue to be amazed how cheap driver's ed is in this country.
Oh, really? I think it's so expensive. It's so funny. Is it more in Germany?
Oh, yeah, I spend well over three thousand dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
Well over three thousand, yeah.
Okay, I guess I won't complain about the check I just wrote to Germany.
What's three thousand euro, yeah.
No, but like when I was growing up, it was, I think, like a couple hundred.
It was included in our high school.
Yeah, I was going to say, there was a class we took at high school like after school.
Yeah, and when I... Insurance rates are crazy in this country.
Yeah, and when I've... When I first started, the state actually, through the state budget, paid a portion of the, of the driver's ed costs and reimbursed. The high school had to run their own program, and then we got reimbursement for it, and that made the costs a lot less, too. But that's been cut for decades now.
Um, so where can people get these tickets?
Um, they could reach out to the student government, student council members. I'm pretty sure that Mr. Fisk would also be able to help if anyone's looking and guide them to the right way. Yeah, and then there's also, you can look in the office as well.
They're selling them in the office.
That's where I purchased mine.
Uh, any questions? No? All right. Moving on to District Administrator Report. Start with Lori.
Hi, I will just add one quick thing. On our first Remote Learning Day, our attendance rate was at ninety-five percent, which is in line with our daily rate. So, thank you to the families. We did a little bit of a hybrid between work that was on the Chromebook and other work that went home to younger children as well. So that seems to have been successful, and just to date you all, it was fifty dollars for me to take driver's ed. I will not mention the year. But I think it's gone up a lot, too.
Lori, did you have any feedback on how parents thought parent-teacher conferences went in the elementary school? I saw some of the information in the other reports.
Yeah, it was, at the elementary level, it was split on which time of either going back to the Rednans' Day weekend or Thanksgiving. It was really just about a fifty-fifty split for parents, as with staff. And probably a little more tipped, the Thanksgiving did go well. I only had a few comments about the challenge of being in school so briefly with children. We had eighty-four percent attendance that day, so I think we were the high of the district. And we did offer, we, I did put the question out. We always ask people to come in, but if someone asks, we will do the remote option, which a few more people took advantage of having it on Thanksgiving than others. But I think on average, like, teachers maybe had two or three meetings that were remote. So it was, it was strong. So, and a lot of comments also said people appreciated being able to come in, see their children's teacher, and have that amount of time. We also run a pretty successful book fair during that time, just to help with the season. So, yeah, we were, I was surprised to see it as split as it was.
I don't have a question, but I will, I will say with the Remote Learning Day, I had some PTSD from way back when, COVID times. But what I was amazed about is that even my first grader knew what to do, where to click, how to do his thing. So we've come a long way from, hey, first grader, here's your laptop, do work at home. I feel that that has worked now so much better than it did three, four, or five years ago. Pretty impressive.
I think one of those things, too, is teachers prep the kids. I think one of those things too is teachers prep the kids before they went. So we've learned a lot about that too, and maybe since it's, it's not as dramatic as during that time. We, we, I know that even K through four, people were helping their kids before they went home.
Any questions for Lori?
I just, I don't have a comment, but I wanted to say, Lori, that I think that's a great idea to do this, this survey to see if what we're trying to do and what we think is going to work for our parents and our staff really are. I thought that was a really great idea.
Each of the schools, we had, that was part of the agreement with this to, because we had no idea how it was going to work, is to check in with staff and families after. So on Monday at our SAU board meeting, we'll have that information of all the schools.
All right. Anything else for Lori? We'll go over to Adam.
All right, I just have a couple of things to add, not a ton. December is always a really nice month of like community service in our school. The student council has our toy and food drive going on and that's kind of like an active thing in the building. It kind of takes over. Kids are bringing in things and it's just a nice spirit, a little bit infectious, which is good. I like to think that their kids are thinking beyond themselves, which is a nice thing. And the next thing is our office is full of the birdseed wreaths from our peer outreach group, our early act group. I'm sorry, early act. They're doing that fundraiser, which is, it's another nice service oriented organization. And I kind of like to highlight the service oriented organizations. It's a great thing for kids to get involved with, so. Little plug there. Next thing I would highlight is our December concert is on the 17th. So if you have some time on Wednesday, December 17th, they'll be here at the auditorium doing the larger holiday concert and that's always a great show. Other than that, just one more kind of highlight slash shout out, not to go back to the article necessarily, that Laura, it was about Laura Lynn, structured literacy, Carrie Harris. But they have gotten a lot of attention from just outside places since that has occurred, which has been pretty cool to see. And next Thursday, they're actually having a follow-up interview with a journalist from Edweek who wants to come in. And I think it's going to be live because she mentioned that you can log in and watch the interview and that there'll be, she'll be taking, she and Carrie Harris will be taking questions kind of in real time. So that, that's kind of a cool thing, you know, it's a national audience. I'm sorry? Oh, th- this one's insight, so I'm sorry.
Because everyone, not everyone subscribes to Edweek.
So just some cool stuff's been kind of going on. And if you want, I have the feedback as well from the conferences. I don't know if you're interested. I pulled it up while Lori was doing hers. We asked similar questions, all three schools kind of did. Our, the overwhelmingly number of folks do feel like they're very valuable, like 86% said student conferences are a really valuable thing that we do. This is from family feedback. The timing of this year's conferences didn't appear to be like a negative in general. 36% said the timing actually made it easier to participate. Another 48% said it had no ability or no impact on my ability to participate. So when you, you take those two segments together, you're at pretty close to 90% of your, you know, parents surveyed saying, yeah, the timing was fine. When do you think the conferences should occur? That was a complete split between either earlier in November has been done in the past. This is just at the middle school and also Thanksgiving week. Literally a split, like one was 40%, one was 38%. And then there was a smattering of other responses, so that's pretty much a pick 'em. I mean, right there, you're within 2% either direction. And I think the other big question we asked was, you know, what should the format be? Like what format works for you? And at the middle school, I think it's pretty well entrenched that offering both remote and in-person really kind of is the way I think we almost have to go. It does work for our building and the data kind of bore that out. We had 82.8% of folks saying, please offer both options. And then it was almost an even split between in-person only and remote only. Like so divide that remaining 18% and it was basically nine and nine. So there's your feedback from families. The staff liked having it Thanksgiving week because we also surveyed staff and they like having all the, the, both options. You know, I think folks realize it just enables more slots. And at the middle school with five classes and huge participation, you just need to have all the slots you can get to make sure you get to everyone who wants a conference. And the virtual option kind of makes that possible. That's it for me.
Any questions for Adam?
So Adam, I just, a couple of things. The birdseed wreaths, if somebody doesn't have a child at the middle school, where can they get that?
I would say call the main office because Catherine Parker, who works right in the main office, is the director or the, essentially the supervisor for early act in the building. So call and ask for Catherine. She could help you out.
And do you have a rough idea of how much it is?
I probably should, but I don't. I, I, if any number I give you, I'm making up. $20 maybe? 25? I don't know.
They're 20. Okay.
I would ask Catherine, because I didn't buy a birdseed wreath. I probably should, but I didn't.
Adam has not bought one.
Adam, go buy one.
It's true. I have not bought one.
So the other thing I wanted to say as a parent, last year we tried to do, so we have twins in the middle school and we were trying to run when you only have 10 minutes with a, a person and they were all at like opposite ends, it felt like we were dr- we were running all over the place. And plus our daughter was also in the eighth grade wing. And this was just so much easier and I want to get a, give a shout out to Ms. DeAngelis, who we could not find a time with all of the ones that we had, because when you have multiple kids, right? For her to fit into our schedule. And she heard us on a meeting with the other son's teacher and she, she like was free that time and she came running over and we also got a meeting with her. So I just wanted to say like, this staff is just amazing. Like they're just, and it was just a really, it was a, it was a fun kind of thing, but it was great to get that feedback, so.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll, they'll appreciate knowing that. They're great people.
Anything else for Adam? All right, moving on to Matt.
Just a couple of quick things to highlight. Next week on the 12th, the 13th and the 14th is the Theory Productions performance of The Diary of Anne Frank. So that's the 12th, 13th and 14th. Our winter concert for the high school is on December 18th. And the first, the first home basketball game against the Giants, Green Giants of Bishop Brady is the 12th of this month. And then for our feedback for the conferences, the vast majority of parents felt that conferences served a valuable purpose. The majority thought that the timing was best that we did this, this time around, Thanksgiving week. And the overwhelming majority want both a in-person and remote option for the staff. Staff at the high school also said that the majority felt that Thanksgiving week was best for conferences.
Matt, this is totally not an important question and one that I could ask you independently, but we're here and I've forgotten to ask you every time as you do speak. How did your marathon go? The student report reminded me that I wanted to ask you. How did it go? Did you?
So I got my results, right? And you get your overall place and that's great. And then you get your, you get your gender and age group. And then there's this third category called masters. So I'm now qualified in the masters category.
Oh, that's great. Good for you. Congrats.
But no, it wasn't good. Thank you.
Yeah.
For, for all three of you, back to your surveys. So I, I, I don't understand really why we asked like, hey, do you think there's a good point of having a parent-teacher conference? Which is fine. And all of you said about 90% said, yeah, we do. What did the other 10% say? What, what were some of the other 10% that was like, yeah, it's a waste of time?
Uh, the ones who, at the high school, the ones who said, who didn't find it necessarily valuable, pointed to grades being all online, Google Classroom allowing access to assignments. So yeah, that was from the high school perspective.
88.2% of parents strongly agreed with the statement, conferences serve a valuable purpose. And then the remaining 13.8% agreed with the statement. So you, you came out at 100%.
I didn't ask that specific question, but in the comment section, because I always just leave that open for people, there were people who also said they wouldn't mind having something in the spring as well, so.
Anything else for Matt? Moving on to Chris.
I don't have a lot to add to my report. We're just finishing up the sponsored guest Wi-Fi portion of the, the new Wi-Fi network. We are also working on a lot of our server infrastructure right now. So we're actively replacing or upgrading a lot of our hardware. But other than that, we're just, you know, keeping the lights on and, and working hard here.
Any questions for Chris? All right, moving on. Mike's report, Athletic Director. Any questions for Mike?
I don't really have a question, more so a comment. He put a comment in here about the budgetary impacts of smaller teams. And I didn't know if that's something that we'll talk about during budget stuff with, but that was just.
Where, where is that in here, Ange?
Um, it was in the second to last paragraph.
Nordic skiing, only having five skiers and, yeah, spirit not having.
Yep, a really small spirit.
Yeah, and sometimes you have to not only make a decision in the year you're in, but it also is a budget decision. I mean, is this going to change? Are we going to have more for the next, the next year? I mean, we had a fall spirit team, but we just didn't, for whatever reason, didn't have winter spirit numbers. And Nordic.
Way down.
It's way down. So that's a, we're going to have to figure that out. And, and, and we've always historically had individual, individual competitors in gymnastics. We haven't for many years had enough to compete as a team, but we always have, have had that opportunity for people to do individual. Nordic has that potential because you can compete as an individual. You don't have to have a full team. Spirit is, there is no individual competition. It's you, it's a team. So that's, that's tough. So as of right now, we are going to have Nordic in the winter, low numbers. We have a coach. We're going to try, we're going to handle that similar to we handle gymnastics. We're not running spirit right now unless something changes, so.
Dwayne, did we have, so when my son was in high school, my oldest son was in high school, Nordic was in the, in the 40s for participants. My question, I, it's twofold, right? There's no snow, so they're, they're training, there's nothing to train on most winters historically recently. And I think that has something to do with that. Obviously we have, you know, we had the great coach who, you know, ultimately retired and all that sort of stuff. But did we have indoor track at that time or is indoor track relatively new? Because it seems to me that a lot of these people have basically shifted over. There was an enormous amount of athletes who wanted to stay in shape that were doing Nordic that I feel like now do indoor track. Feel free to chime in on it.
And I, I do think everything that, that you said is accurate. I mean, there were times for Nordic where, when we would go to away, Nordic's a meet, right? Away meets, we'd have to take two buses. We'd have more than 50, you know, males and females on, on those teams, so we'd have to take two buses. And I think indoor isn't at that point, but there were years where the comments I made about winter spirit and, and Nordic, we were making about indoor track. And there were years where, you know, we had very few indoor track participants, but we would give them that opportunity to, to compete as individuals. I mean, technically you're a team, even if you're one competitor. But yeah, we had low numbers and I think Matt's right. I think it shows the power of, you know, the adults that are part of the program, for sure. You mean having trouble for Nordic? Oh yeah. The one, I think the one outlier to that, I think this is true and Matt might know, but I think the Concord program has kind of expanded. And I think that expansion has gone hand in hand with snowmaking at Beaver Meadow Golf Course, which is where they practice and a lot of people, there, there's been a big push to, to do Nordic at, at the golf course in Concord. So. I don't think so, no. Well, actually, no, I shouldn't say I don't think so. No, we don't. We don't do practices over there.
One of my coworkers, her daughter does Nordic and we were talking about it. They practice at Proctor this time of year until Beaver Meadow gets ready. So they're already, like they, because they need snow there. They need snow at Proctor. Yeah.
Especially if we could use Beaver Meadow.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, that's where our golfing practice is. But maybe that's not the driver of the numbers, you know? Maybe it's not the snow, maybe it's something else.
Yeah, but I think it's a good idea to flesh that out.
Someone related to this, and I don't have high school kids, so forgive me if this is a silly question. Matt, do you have about 640 students in the building?
We have 640, exactly.
So. Right. Well, my question wouldn't pertain to pre-K. From the 640, historically speaking, ha- has the participation rate in athletics been steady or declining? Especially broken down by season, as fall season more active, 80% of the building participate. Whereas winter season, historically, just people don't play much, which, I don't know.
No, the numbers have been fairly consistent if you start my time here. I think just the nature of winter sports, because basketball, you know, you really have 12, 12 rostered players, right? Versus, you know, hockey, soccer, you could have, you know, 20. So I think just the nature of the sports is one of the factors. But the numbers have been really consistent. We're usually one of the highest recent rates of participation. I think I just sent this to Dwayne, uh, sorry, to Owen. We had 200 and.
50.
50 or 260 students participated in all, that's what I'm shooting at, in fall sports.
Oh, wow. That's pretty, okay.
That's impressive.
The other piece that's, I think, that I personally like is that there is a lot of overlap between students who do sports, students who do users, students who do fearers. So it's nice that students don't have to choose between and I'm glad you never.
Cool. I was just curious. Anything, anything else for Mike's report? We'll move on to Multi-Tier Systems Coordinator. Anything, any questions for her? I didn't, I didn't have any. You guys?
My only question, but she's not here anyway, but I can just email her. I was just wondering about how the attendance is. It looks like she's offering those one trusted adult sessions three times a month and I just didn't know if people were, if people were coming to them.
Uh, sh- I don't think the participation has been great, but I'll find out.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the action of your manifest and voucher.
Do you have it? I have it in front of me. I'll make a motion to.
Thank you.
The manifest for the period ending, oh, sorry, October 31st. Manifest for the period ending, oh, sorry, October 31st, 2025, in the amount of $2,961,064.98.
Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Eyes have it. Moving on to personal actions. We don't have any. All right. All right, strategic planning update?
Not a huge update. We have another meeting on the 11th. We've only met once since we last met here as a board. So the next piece is to plan the community forum, and we're looking at dates in February for that. And I will share with you when we have them.
Moving on to wrestling overnight trip, Middlebury.
So you don't have this in your packet? We were, you did, okay, good. We didn't have it in time. So it's the same trip that they've done the last couple of years. They go to Middlebury for two nights overnight. It's during break, and they are, it's funded, other than the fee, it's funded by athletics, the rest is funded by the wrestling team. Looking for your approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I just have one question. In the printout, it seems like there's a box over something that's written, full, there's a letter C, and then I don't know what the rest of the, full what? I wouldn't know.
Something dependent on family.
It says full, the full cost dependent on families.
Okay, okay.
Full cost.
That's a textbook. Okay. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Pass. All right. There's a, there's an item here, open enrollment, but we've just met as a board and talked about it.
Right. Yeah, I had put this on here before we met as a board, thinking that we wouldn't have that opportunity until now, but we already did that.
Sounds good.
Good.
Okay. Moving on to public comment, once more. Moving on to board committee and delegate reports. You guys are free to leave, you're welcome to stay. All right. Policy committee, what's new?
Yeah, we have a bunch that we're going through, so on the 15th, what are the O's?
The Fs.
We'll have that for you shortly.
Can't wait. Negotiations?
Nothing.
Nothing, all right. Budget? Well, we're working on a budget.
When did it meet? I always forget. January.
January.
Town CIP?
Dwayne, did you hear back from Glenn? Did he respond?
If not, I will, I'll move it to the top of his email tomorrow.
Okay. No, I think we probably have to meet with the town CIP one last time, but nothing new to add since we last spoke about it.
District CIP, buildings and yields.
Again, we talked a little bit about it Monday, so nothing, nothing new to add since Monday.
Indeed. Wellness?
We're going to have our first quarterly meeting Monday, if anybody wants to come.
What time Monday?
Noon, maybe? It's on my calendar. Noon, I think.
I'm busy at noon.
Right here.
Future ready schools, we have not met. Transportation.
We keep on trucking.
Yeah, bus nine. Just soft. Bus 10 and 14 combined, bus nine down. It's like a flurry of emails all day long.
I know, I kept getting them. I was like, what? I don't even have any kids in these schools. Oh, my kid did that once.
Kindergarteners are small. Oh, I didn't have that on, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, just rode around the whole way. And, and so that just was on the same day as all the other stuff. You're like, oh, whatever, that's fine.
But did he get a personal lift home?
He went home with the middle schoolers, so.
Had a visit from Ms. Kruger.
Yep. It was good. She.
Just, this is somewhat tangentially. We're going to talk to the budget committee about buses and whatnot. I was wondering, is there a way for us to contrast, what would it cost for, for Bo to just contract everything out? All of, just call up SDA and say, hey, you guys are doing it for us now.
Yeah. Dunbarton. Versus. I've, let's, I'm trying to think, in the time I've been here, which, you know, is a few years now, we've done that a couple times. We've kind of gotten that, that estimate from them. I mean, one of the wild cards for them is a location to stage out at, because there's no assumption that, you know, where we have all our buses stored and where we maintain them is, that's a town-owned facility. So the town, so it's great cooperation, and we're very appreciative and, and things. There's, there's no guarantee that that would be the same location, and if it was the same location, they would factor in something, because there'd be an expectation that the town would probably charge them. But that is something that they do. I mean, they do it for, you know, for other districts, because, you know, for example, in Dunbarton, they'll give you a contract amount, you know, so much money per bus per day is what they do, and, and that is something we can do. I mean, you know, we know those folks. I mean, it's pretty simple for us to contact them and, you know.
Martin, you're asking about getting rid of all the buses and, and being, being, joining a service.
Yeah, what's, what's more cost effective?
So my, correct me if I'm wrong, although I have been the transportation chair for like 10 years now. But.
Which means nothing, by the way.
What?
He owns a bus by now.
No, my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, Dwayne, that it's basically 50/50, half dozen of the other. There's pros and cons of both. The cost benefit isn't a great deal, but the biggest benefit we have is that you're at the mercy of their scheduling and their priorities, if it, if we're just one of their customers, as opposed to us owning the buses and be able to set our own priorities. And so that's a huge savings when you're ever in a bind and people can't find bus drivers or whatever. We, we're not put at the bottom of the list or any list where we can prioritize ourselves. Correct me if I'm wrong on all of that.
No, I think that's very fair. I mean, I think when you, you know, like with anything that we do, when, when you have your own employees doing it and your own administration overseeing it, you have, you know, control over a lot of things. But with that comes, you know, requirements that you have to do a lot of things. So it go, kind of goes both ways. So, you know, it's an exercise that, you know, I think, it's been a while since, since we did that. A lot's changed, certainly, since we did that. It's not a bad exercise to do, for sure. You know, I was talking to, you know, SDA, Goffstown Truck, because they, they do Dunbarton today, and we, we, we're doing some, a couple change, minor stuff, but a couple minor changes in Dunbarton, and, you know, you know, I'm happy to do that, if that's, that's what you would like to see.
Yeah.
And we can do that.
And I think also, how many of your transportation folks live in Bo, Bo and Dunbarton? Like, how many local folks do you guys employ?
Fine, I, I can definitely get that. I mean, it's, it's, you know, there's a few right off the top of my head, but I'll get you the exact number.
Cool. All right. Moving on, New Hampshire School Board Association.
On the 17th? Sorry. On the 17th, there is the 2026 legislative preview that they are giving from 12 to 1:30.
I feel like with all the bills that are being watched, it should be like three hours, not just now and half.
I would agree. I honestly, a lot of times I feel like, I think before I was on the board, they had in-person, and I, I think I would rather have that, because sometimes when you do these webinars, they're cut short, not completely getting in-depth. It's, yeah, it's, yeah. I think it would be great to have them go back to in-person and maybe, yeah.
But it's difficult. You used to get a nice lunch.
Yeah, when I went, I went to a couple, nice little box lunch, sandwich, bag of chips. Just be nice not to be in the middle of work day.
Well, exactly. No, but if you register.
You can do some of the recordings. I just haven't had luck getting them to play. I've tried a couple times and I haven't.
Yeah, but you might have something that's blocking, so if you register, you can watch it or listen to it at any time, because they'll send, after it's done, they'll send you the recording, so.
All right. Athletic improvements and funding.
Yeah, we sort of talked a little bit about this in our budget process. I actually will talk to Mike again about sort of what the, a little more detail on what we're potentially going to spend the, the coming years, athletic fees that we have incurred, that we will incur, and how that's going to work, but nothing particular to add.
Okay. Booster club.
Going well, getting ready for winter seasons. I had, I was, I had the money that we made. We made about, I lost it between.
It was $11,000.
Yeah, but it was compared to last year. It was, I think if I remember correctly, like $1,200 more in gate money. But concessions, I think the money must not be right, because concessions was like $75 difference, and there's no way that that's possible. But the gate money was like $1,200 different, and the 50/50 was like $900 different, so definitely with the Friday night lights, making a lot more money there. So hoping to get some people, more people involved, volunteering for winter sports, doing basketball gate and wrestling meets, and we'll go from there.
One last public comment. No microphone. You can come right down here. Your private audience.
Ben Davis, Nine Wheeler Road. As far as athletic improvements, the middle school fields, the baseball field, the outfield especially, is in real rough shape. I don't, I haven't seen the softball, maybe the softball field too, but the boys' soccer field, or I don't even know if the girls play on that field too, but the track field at the middle school, it is the worst I've seen it in years. I ref soccer around the state, I've seen a lot of fields, and this one is one of the worst. There was no grass. That's the old well?
Yeah.
Okay, I was, I was wondering if that was happening or not.
I will hopefully fix that.
Football practices, yeah. That's tough to avoid, I get that, but it was, the soccer field blew my mind. We, we got bumped a couple times. Yeah, we got bumped a couple times because someone was using our field for soccer club, but it was like, what is, what is happening? As long as there's a plan, I was just curious if it's being remedied. Well, I remember that, that, that didn't fly.
I think the one, just the, the one part to add to that is the, the reason we didn't do the irrigation this summer is the well, the domestic well, took way longer than it was supposed to. That crossover, boy, if this doesn't, it's supposed to happen before the Christmas holidays. And then once that crossover happens to the new well, and we decommission the old well, we already have the sprinkler material is all purchased, and they're going to install it, hopefully, right when middle school lacrosse gets over, and then we'll have, hopefully, some of the, the, end of the summer, beginning of the fall. And then as part of that, we want to do some upgrades to the field as well, because I don't disagree at all. We had a very.
We had a very tough year this year.
Yeah, it needs to be like noon, dirt and.
Where the lines are painted, that actually stays pretty firm, so you get like these divots in the field. So I, I thought there was a plan, I knew that the well was discussed, but it hadn't happened, I just couldn't know if that was still.
And one, just one other thing too, that kind of happened to us. I mean, this was obviously not a great summer for growing anything, and for the first time this year, we really had some issues, well, maybe not the first time ever, but we had really tough issues with the high school irrigation well, especially not only volume, but pressure getting out to the field hockey field, which is the longest run to the, to the irrigation pump. And we had some spots on the, on the field hockey field that, that just were not good, and that's really uncommon for us.
That's the nicest grass field hockey field maybe in the country.
And we had some tough spots on it.
I saw that field hockey field once, and that was, it was pristine. I was amazed that that was. That could just transfer over to the soccer fields. Good. Thank you.
What about the drainage for the girls' softball?
So the, so we had, I can't remember the company, I've got a blank on it, come out and look, and, and it's draining as it's designed. It's supposed to pitch into that ditch, and then it runs down the hill, down across from the tennis courts. Because when they put the tennis courts in, this was before me, but my understanding is when they put the tennis courts in, everything used to drain to where the tennis courts are, and they had to direct it away, and it has to go around the corner of the tennis courts. So everything pitches into, and then it drains around the, like my hand signals.
I like that.
They drains around the tennis courts. I don't, so there's two, we have two locations on campus, on both those campuses, that are wet all the time, and I don't, we can have somebody look at it. It's not just that location, it's also the corner of the JV soccer field beyond the outfield fence and softball. That place is also wet. Part of that is it doesn't get any sun back there, but, but we can have somebody look at that again. It, it, yeah, I mean, there's going to be places, I think, that are just going to be, regardless of your, you know, I can think of the places at Cobrown, that are going to be the places where everything is draining to, and it just is going to be a wet area, but we can look at it.
So what do they do for the drainage? Do they do like a French drain? Or did they just, did they just dig a?
Yeah, that I don't know. It wasn't.
Because if the ditch filled in, that would explain it.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I know the, the area that's supposed to take it down the hill and around the, the tennis court, that looks fine, but I, I don't know what is in, underneath those middle school fields. Might not be anything, actually.
Those are expensive projects. I, I know BAC put up, let's call it a Band-Aid on one of the fields at Elbin Road, and I think spent about 20 grand for a Band-Aid. And I know at Colley in Hooksett, they, they did some big drainage project under one of their fields, it was half a million dollars, just to fix the drainage under, like their soccer field or something.
I mean, there, no question, there, those, those are a lot. Yeah. And, and we can, I mean, look, we can look at, you know, but I think that becomes pretty, you know, obviously, the season when baseball and softball happens is, you know, what kind of winter did you have? Did you have a lot of snow? Did, did you have a lot of rain? You know, we had, oddly enough, as much as we had a drought, the beginning of the season, I remember, was it rained every day, and everything was pretty wet. So, yeah, I mean, the, the, the middle school fields are older, they obviously were built a lot, way before the high school. So, yeah, they need some attention. I don't disagree, so.
Have you given any thought to the shrubbery or the weeds or whatever you call that stuff between the softball, middle school softball, middle school baseball? It's very thick now.
They're just prickers.
Yeah, time marches on. I mean, that just, that stuff is pretty, you can't go through there at all. And I certainly know at one point, there's a very nice batting cage that was supposed to be used by both, but I don't think, if that was put at the softball field, but I don't think the baseball guys use it, because there's really no easy access down there, because you can't get through all those, those prickers or whatever. And the same is true from the softball field down to the tennis courts. That growth in there is just massive. And, and, you know, we had the same thing, right, at the high school baseball, and a few years ago, they basically burned it all. They burned it all, it's great. I mean, I, I don't know if there's any thought or value to doing that at both those two hillside locations, but, you know, time just marches on and stuff just gets bigger and grows.
But that's, that's the thing, Bryce, exactly. So, so when the girls, like, will hit balls and they'll end up over there, they'll go for it. There is a ditch there. That's why I'm thinking like the drainage.
Oh, there's a ditch of water in there, yeah, yeah.
There's a ditch, but it's all filled up, but that's the problem. I don't think it's actually functioning, I don't think there's any grade left to it, so that it will slope down, and, um, and then it's all filled up with these pricker bushes too, so the girls go into.
You're talking first baseline, right?
I'm talking, exactly.
Yeah.
It's all there, but whatever, like, so if you have a pitch with drainage, right, like, whatever pitch that they did have is non-existent now. It's, it's completely filled in. So I think, like, doing all of that, like, will maybe help with the, with the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll see it, when you go over to those fields.
Yeah, it's always wet in there.
Go try to get a ball. In the ditch.
All right, uh, moving on? Is there a, oh, a board open comment? Bottom line?
I have a random question for you, Dwayne, and I, you might not, I don't know, I'm not even sure I know how to ask this, but I had a, sort of a friend, one of my son's AU teammates' dads. He reached out to me recently because he works for Brown and Brown, who does insurance, and they've been doing a lot of school health insurance. And he just asked, he knew I was on school board, so he just asked if we've ever looked into places besides, yeah, besides school care and health trust. And I was like, I'm sure, Dwayne, like, I was, our business administrator is the best. I'm sure he's looked into other cost-effective, you know, ways to do healthcare, and this has been the best option. But he just said, you know, hey, if you ever wanna look into it, tell him I'd be happy to talk, and I was like, well, just mention it, because I don't actually know if we've ever looked into self-funded.
Yeah, two, I guess two parts to that. Um, we have, I mean, for many years, you know, before I think the, the latest kind of issues that, I think the three pools and now two pools, um, have had lately, um, oh, the kind of the rule of thumb is if you were gonna self-fund, and there are different products now, so. It was like you need to have like five hundred, um, covered employees. We never had that. Now they're saying that that number is less. And, and I have a request on my desk, actually, um, to kinda just look at it from the, uh, company that, that, uh, assisted us with our life and disability when we re-upped that. Um, I mean, it's, it's kind of involved, you know, what you have to give them census and, you know, claims data and stuff like that, but it's not on, we've looked into that before. The one thing that, um, we have to ensure though is that any plan that isn't, um, what we currently offer, based on the three union agreements, we have two in Bo and one in Dunbarton, all specify a certain level of coverage.
Right.
So it has to be equivalent or better.
Yeah.
Um, and with self-funding comes, there's certain things that, you know, we have health trust now, that health trust does, that we don't have to do basically with our own employees. Cobra administration, retiree administration, you know, things like that, which can be pretty involved. And we have about forty-ish, almost fifty retirees that are still on our plan, they're paying for it. We don't pay for retiree insurance, but we still have to administer that program. We don't have a lot of Cobra, uh, administration that we have to do, but, um, those are kind of those value things that, that the pools do, both pools do it. So, I mean, we have looked into it, um, I mean, we're probably gonna keep doing that.
Yeah.
That's another entity that we could, we could have look at it. Um, and one of the things is, you know, self-funded, I mean, um, Rochester just did it, um, you know, Manchester does it, they're obviously big, Nashua. Um, but I think one of the things is, can you self-insure with, you know, and currently we have Anthem, you know, it's through Health Trust, but it's Anthem Plan.
Right.
Um, you can, you know, you'd be going Anthem Direct, you know, there's a lot of ways that you could then set that up, but.
Our region, there's, um, some districts in our region that are looking to do that. Um, I know SEU twenty-four is one of them, uh, and they were talking about having more than one entity, so more than one school district.
Yeah.
Together, so you could refer him there.
Yeah, I think there's.
Yeah, he said they, he's had a lot of engagement with schools recently, so he just figured he'd reach out to her. He lives in Auburn, but just like, he was like.
Well, I think there was some engagement by me when I got that letter, and Health Trust said that if this legislation passes, we're not gonna be a continuing concern. I'm like, well.
With Health Trust, and then now even more recently, school care, he's had a lot of.
He didn't hear from me, but somebody else did.
Right.
Um, so, and I, I do think too, the, the level of rate change this year from both Health Trust and school care groups is pretty alarming. I mean, we're at sixteen, which is the, the biggest increase that, that we've had, um, since I've been here. So a sixteen percent change, which is obviously a large change to the budget. There are districts that are twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty-five, and that'll make you rethink what you're doing pretty fast.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I, there's a few things that's going on right now that I don't have any solution to.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, I think, I think we could, yes, I think, I've got, like, literally, like I said, I have something on my desk to actually just have somebody just give me, what does this even look like? What service is provided? What do I have to do? What does our office have to do? But it, but the starting point is, it has to be this plan.
Yeah.
And it has to be administered in the same way, and, and not every HRA is administered the same way either. I mean, ours is not what a lot of districts do, where we pay after the employee pays the first part, whether that's a thousand of the three thousand, or whether it's fifty fifty. Not every HRA is administered, so it's gotta do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot to it, so. I appreciate that.
Curious, yeah, he reached out. I don't know.
Any other, uh, bottom line? Hearing none? Is there any for none public? All right, then I will entertain a motion. Would you?
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.